Okay, so we are called to order at 7:03. I do have two quick corrections to the agenda. The first one is that I would like to move the agenda item under new business to for thanking Scott Butler for his excellent service to the library up to number three on the agenda since he was he's good enough to be with us this evening. And I'd also like to add under new business adding, well, recruiting more trustees.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Any other additions or corrections for the agenda?
Yeah, I would, I found out that the, I think it's the Winnetka Library has something. Let me bring up my email. I wanted us to just, I wanted to know whether our library had it. But I also wanted to know if we don't have it, whether or not we maybe should have it. And here it is. It's a link from the Winnetka Library. And what you can do is they won't, they won't give you a newspaper when you go in, but they have an app where you can access any article from about 30 different newspapers. No pictures, but articles. And I just wondered, do we do anything like that? It's the Winnetka Library reference.
Do you know the name of the service?
ProQuest.
Ah, okay. Uh, we do get some ProQuest databases. I don't know, not that many, I don't think. Let's see here.
What she wrote me is, we currently, this is the Winnetka Library librarian talking. We currently have a ProQuest subscription you can read, but it is a database and does not read like a traditional newspaper. It links to articles available for the day in full written form.
Right now, our newspaper databases are master file complete and EBSCO host. Those are the two that we've got. I know that at times in the past, we've had ProQuest for the Chicago Tribune subscription specifically. They tend to be one of our, one of the more expensive database options, which is why usually when we've had it, it's for a particular subscription and we've been able to get a deal for a year or two.
Was it?
But it's, it's worth looking. Not really, but then that was under very different circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, probably worth taking into consideration that, you know, you know, we can't really provide easy newspaper access otherwise. No, that's definitely something we can take a, take a look at, Cal.
Do we have online subscriptions for the newspapers that we receive on a daily basis?
Some of them I believe that we do. I would need to check with Jen and I can check in with Jen who handles our periodicals and then
because I'm just curious. We get the Wall Street Journal, so we get an online journal every day. And I think Jack does for the Tribune too. It just, it just occurred to me with Cal's question if that would be available to patrons.
Yeah.
We had talked about it and the big obstacle was that we would have to give the email and password to the public, which would mean they would have access to like being able to cancel the account.
Yeah.
Because it's an individual account, not necessarily for an establishment.
Yeah, that, that's my recollection is that the ones that we've got the online access to they, they have it set up like it's a personal account. So you go in and you have full access to like all the personal account things. So you can cancel service, you can change service, you've got billing access. They, they don't really set it up and it's probably partly intentional that they don't do that for being able to be shared with a number of people by a library. Generally subscribers, most subscribers of any, whether it's a book or a magazine or a newspaper, try to err on the side of having to get libraries to pay more.
Well, of course.
I mean, they're businesses.
Yeah, right.
You know, their, their mission statement is to make money and not I'll be altruistic, so. But Cal, I will follow up on that and I'll send something out to the, to the board as far as where we're at with the digital magazine resources.
Okay.
Okay. So then I think that takes us up to
Where did you want to put the second correction or addition to the agenda recruit new board members? You wanted to put that under?
New business. And that'll be just a real quick update. Any other additions or corrections? Okay. So that takes us up to let's see here, up to Scott. And see if I can manage to do this successfully. There we go. Okay. So Resolution 202003, whereas Scott Butler joined the Board of Trustees of the Lake Bluff Public Library in May 2013 and was elected to a second four-year term in 2017. And whereas Mr. Butler brought experience in marketing, management and finance along with a spirit of collaboration and fair play to the library board. And whereas Mr. Butler sought to build connections between the village and library and bring greater clarity to financial reporting during his tenure as treasurer for the Board of Trustees. And whereas Mr. Butler discharges responsibilities faithfully and in the spirit of service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Library Trustees as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks Scott Butler for seven and a half years of service to the Village of Lake Bluff as a library trustee. The Board hereby directs the library director to provide Mr. Butler with a signed copy of this resolution and a certificate of thanks, which is very well earned. And I would add personally that Scott, it has been tremendous pleasure having you here on the board. Learned a lot from you and hope that you'll drop by once in a while, keep us looped in as to what you're up to.
You're here.
I want to apologize to you guys. I'm really sorry that this happened so suddenly. I had, I don't know that we would have not moved if I had known this was going to happen, but I had no idea that had caused this, my not being able to stay on the board. And particularly given that you were already one board member short, I feel really bad about it. My experience on the board has been extremely pleasurable. It's been great getting to know everybody, current board members and past board members. I think the library is in great hands right now. I think things are in a really good place. And I will definitely keep stopping by because I'm still a reader. Thanks for the, thanks for the notice.
Well deserved, Scott. We'll miss you.
Yes, I thank you for everything. You, you sort of, you're just like a fixture on the board. So I very much appreciate all that you've
Good luck, Scott. We're gonna miss you.
Definitely.
And Cal, I'm thinking about possibly going back to the Lake Forest Center. So I may run into you over there.
Yeah, I've been going back twice a week, only though, only to work with my trainer. I have not gone into the pool or anything like that.
Yeah.
But they run a pretty tight ship over there. I think it's safe to go.
Apparently you have to make an appointment to use the pool now.
You do. And any classes that they offer, I don't take any of the classes either, but you also have to make an appointment for the classes because they will only allow 10 people in each class.
So, and if any of you are curious about who I'm going to vote for in the upcoming election.
You know, Scott, I knew this would come up.
So call me at the end of October. I made up my mind by then.
Well, for those, as a public service announcement, my husband and I sent, actually went to the Lake County Board of Elections, applied for our ballots, which the application was then mailed to us, to which we have sent back. And we will receive our ballots within two days of September 26th to do with as we please. So, and then I believe early voting, you can vote at the, up in Waukegan anytime you want, or starting October 15th. So you really do have a lot of opportunities to get your vote out and do what you need to do, so.
And I think for people who are concerned about COVID, just dropping off a ballot at a election voting place, if you're worried about the mail being slow, if you're worried about COVID, you can just drop your ballot off. And it's more likely to get recorded that way. So promise me that you're going to vote. Please, please, please.
Yes, for sure.
I've already, already applied for my absentee ballot. And if it, I didn't realize Kathy just mentioned they're being mailed out apparently September 26th or 24th. I didn't, I didn't know the date they were being mailed out, but
Yeah, it's, they start the 20, say the 24th, the 26th. So you aren't necessarily, but supposedly within two to four days of that date yours. And then if not, you can track it online and
Speaking, speaking of voting, I have a question for you guys. I did an online application for both Rick and I for absentee ballots. And then about a week later, we both got something in the mail saying fill out this application to send it in. And I don't know if, because I came to the conclusion that everybody in the state of Illinois got that letter.
No, no, Jenny, that's the response to your online request.
So I do have to fill out the paper form?
Yes, you do.
Still, okay.
Well, I didn't make an online request and I still got that application.
Same here.
Yeah, and we got one for our son who's abroad too. And he, he had already taken care of his.
So they're, they're automatically mailing paper applications to everyone who has voted basically since November of 2018. You get the application, but I believe you can, you don't need to fill out a paper application. You can fill it out online. At least that's what I did. But it should be unconnected to the submitting the electronic request is my understanding.
Okay, so Martha, you think if I filled out an application online that I do not need to fill out the paper one and send it in?
That was my understanding, yes.
Jenny, my understanding is just the opposite of that.
The opposite, okay.
Yeah, because we read it pretty carefully and then two days after I got the things in the mail and then we turned right around and sent them.
Okay.
And
There must be a way to check using my address and signature or something to see if
You can email them because I had, I had accidentally submitted my electronic request twice. And I panicked and was like, they're going to arrest me for voter fraud. So, and I, I emailed them.
You are the proof, Martha. You are the proof.
All the fuss is about.
And so I had emailed them to see if, basically to make sure I wasn't going to get in trouble. And they, they confirmed that like, that they'd received my request. So you can always like ask them. They were pretty quick to respond.
I went up to Village Hall in Lake Forest to let them know that my address changed. And they gave me a form to fill out. And so I think if you want to check your status, you probably could just go up there and ask them because I think they have all the records there.
Lake County Clerk's Office is pretty responsive.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So to bring this last political discussion to an end, I do want to thank, thank Kathy for bringing to my attention the number of times my propensity for bringing politics into the discussion. And I've tried to moderate that as much as I can, but I couldn't leave without saying something.
We wouldn't expect you to, Scott.
So good luck and I hope the fundraising campaign goes spectacularly well and we'll, we'll be checking in.
You know, Scott, if I could just say one more thing, just a little reminiscent when we were first getting to know each other. We went out for a cup of coffee and, and you said to me, Kathy, what do you think I could do to be a better trustee? And I said, with all due respect, stop talking about politics at the meetings. So that goes back like seven years.
Yes. All right, guys, you gotta, you've got a lot to talk about. Thanks again for this.
Thank you.
I hope to see you around town.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Take care. Stay well, Scott.
You guys too.
Okay, so on that note, I would look for a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion from Heinzlman, second from Stroh. And I'll call the vote. I think we'll just do a regular voice vote for this since it doesn't involve money. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Who would dare oppose that?
Well, I didn't think anybody would, but
Talk about getting yourself drummed out of town.
Cal, you're so funny.
Okay, so that takes us up to our regular number three on the agenda then, which is an opportunity for the public to address the board. We have some public presence. Let's see, Martha, Katie and Jillian, would any of you members of the public care to say a few words?
No, I'm good, but my cat is also sitting in on the meeting, so I suppose I should ask him to.
Well, we want to see a picture.
Well, here, I'll tell you what, I'll turn on my video.
Jenny, for the, for the minutes, the cat's name is Houdini?
No, that's Gilbert.
Oh, that's Gilbert, okay.
That's Gilbert. He's our old resident. Houdini's the new resident and he's sleeping elsewhere. Yeah, you're on, you're on camera, Gilbert. It's his pre or snooze.
Show you my kitties, but they're bugged out.
Okay. On that, then we will move on to, let's see, approval of the minutes from the July meeting. Any questions, corrections related to the minutes? Jenny, excellent work as always.
I did want to, there was one point in the minutes where it mentioned that our printing costs had gone down because there aren't any programs. And I just wanted to, there are programs, there are just fewer, so our newsletter is a little bit lower.
Okay, was that in number five?
Yes.
See here.
Printing costs were, because there have been, okay, so should I put fewer programs or different programs or what?
Yeah, fewer programs or we've just been doing a slightly different approach with the newsletter to better work with our circumstances, but that's probably more detail than anyone needs.
I mean, they could probably just say we have less pages, so the printing cost is down, right?
That's true.
And just leave the rest of it out of it.
Or just say the newsletter is shorter.
There you go, Cal.
Now say what? I'm sorry?
It's shorter.
Shorter programs?
No, the news, the newsletter itself is shorter.
I, do you have a question about a program if I could jump in here?
By the way.
I saw that Leslie Goddard had done a presentation, I believe Typhoid Mary is it? I assume that was virtual. Okay, all right, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, all our programming is still virtual.
So do people register for that, like a Zoom meeting and then they're given the?
Yeah, so Spring Share that we now have on the website, the event calendar. They have a really great integration where when people register for a program, the system will automatically email them the Zoom link. So then it's also just not hanging out there for any old person with mischievous intent to, to grab. So it's, it just emails them the link and then they have that for logging on later.
And do you know, just offhand, if Leslie's fee is any different for a virtual meeting than an onsite?
I have no idea. I know that some programmers, like they would normally account for travel, so they might knock off, you know, however many dollars is, but I don't know about Leslie offhand. It was a good program. I was there for it.
Well, for things are, that's great.
Yeah, we had 48 or something like that. So
Fabulous.
Yeah.
More than we'd probably be able to fit into the spruth room.
Yeah, well, there were 70, like 70 something registered, which was kind of incredible.
So, so of those 70, you're saying only 40 showed up?
Yeah, there were a few people that were registered multiple times, but still I'm calling it a win.
You vote, huh?
I mean, it's also, it's more than we would have been able to accommodate had we had the program in person, which is kind of neat too.
Okay. Does that answer the question on Leslie Goddard?
Yes, thank you so much.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments, requested changes?
Yeah, I have a question about, about the programming. The Senior Center does a lot of virtual programs and I have attended several. And what you do is you just call up and make a reservation and then at 24 hours beforehand, they send you a link. For people like myself that absolutely hate doing anything online, can you just call the library and make a reservation the way we used to do when it wasn't virtual?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That's not a change to the minutes though, Cal, right?
No, no change.
Martha, does that count as a reference question?
Yes.
Sure, why not?
Okay. Is that all the questions? Okay. In that case, I would look for a vote to approve the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion from Stroh, a second from Heinzlman. Call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay.
You're on a roll.
We're on a roll, indeed. Okay, it takes us up to the financial reports. And there we are then. Okay. For the financial reports, a couple items to highlight. You can see on page, the first page of the financial reports here that we received another chunk of property tax funds larger than we had received same month last year reflecting those folks who had opted to take advantage of the offer from the county to delay payment. So those funds starting to come in slower than last year as expected. You know, still very much kind of fingers crossed, wait and see as far as where we'll end up finally. Though if everything works out, we should still, as previously reported, get the, the full amount that we had levied for. Additionally, on page three of five in the report, I would draw attention to that we do have one line where we've already managed to go over budget. And that is our patron and staff software. And we're over budget on that for the very simple reason that we have had to buy a lot of software that we had not anticipated needing. Things like Spring Share and Zoom and Bean Stack, some of which you know, reasonably expensive and things that we've purchased be, because we're doing all of our programming exclusively digital and we need the software to be able to do that. The, the asterisk attached to that number though is very much that most all the stuff in that line that we've purchased thus far is potentially reimbursable. So there's money that's available through FEMA, there's money that's available through the CARES Act. And we've actually applied for already reimbursement from the CARES Act through Lake County. So fingers crossed, we should see most of the funds attached to that budget line reimbursed to us. So hopefully that'll have a positive outcome and that'll be the case. It does seem like if things don't pan out with the CARES Act that we can always try with FEMA. So there doesn't seem to be a shortage of disaster funds available at this point. Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, how long, how long does that take once you put through on the, with the CARES Act or the, or with FEMA? Is that, is that a 90-day process?
You know, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm not, I, I'm not certain I ever got a straight number on that from the county. I'm hopeful that they won't take too long. I, I would think with what's supposed to be emergency funding that they wouldn't.
Be, yeah, be very quick, yeah.
Yeah.
2020 though, so, yeah.
Yes. Anything could happen in 2020.
Yeah.
Don't sound too excited, Cal.
Well, I'm just thinking of the mess. You know, you're hoping this comes through and I'm thinking there's no way it's going to come through very soon because look what happened with all the people applying for, you know, when they lose their jobs.
Unemployment.
What was it?
Unemployment benefits.
Yes, yeah. And my goodness, what a mess that is.
Yeah.
Out of faith in the state of Illinois.
Well, we're it's not a make or break for us. So
FEMA, FEMA is federal, not state, right? And then you said the CARES Act is through Lake County?
Yes.
But that's a federal act.
Yeah, so it's
You know, you're, I'm, obviously we have to be patient and wait this out, but at the same time, a phone call to Brad Snyder's office at some point in time would be my recommended next step when you feel that that's a good idea. And they've been so helpful in just information processing for us that I think that would be yeah. We're seeing her.
Help you out too.
Yeah, Sandy Hart, I think would be potentially the best resource because the CARES Act is being for our neck of the woods being administered through the county, which is her wheelhouse, of course. I don't know if I mentioned, but she's actually the the head of the county board now as well.
Yes.
Yeah. We do have the advantage that our CARES Act application, we piggybacked on the larger application put through by the village. So So that, that gives us more oomph to the request because it's not just us, it's a much more substantial request coming from a full municipality. Plus, we get to piggyback on any griping that the village does. So and I would hazard that Drew and definitely Kathy O'Hara are probably very capable of making their concern about timeliness known if they so wish, so. Happy to piggyback on that, but yeah, no, worth keeping an eye on, we need to keep an eye on it and we need to nudge and prod as needed to keep that moving. I'm delighted that we aren't in a situation where that makes or breaks us. Because twenty-twenty, so who knows? Any other questions on that one, that part of the budget? And we can follow up and discuss that further, Kathy, if you, if you want to do that.
No, I think we just should set up reasonable thirty-day, ninety-day window of some kind, so we have a reasonable time to follow up. I mean, that was, that legislation was what, in June or May even?
Yeah.
I don't know, but there's a point at which a phone call would be warranted.
Yeah. The application, the application process was a bit delayed, so applications only went out at the end of July as far as us having to have it in, so. Probably doesn't set a great precedent for how quick the turnaround is going to be.
You know, I'm scrolling through this real quick and I ask this every month about the village allowance to us, has that come in yet? Or is that just continuing to be late as just normal?
Um, well, the, what we're looking at right here is the is the revenue and expense report for the current fiscal year. So that eighty-five, eighty-five hundred there will get added in at the end of this fiscal year. My understanding of the eighty-five hundred is that that will get, when the audit is finalized, that that'll get added in at that point. And I will follow up with Tina and make sure that that goes in for the last fiscal year.
Did we, therefore, we receive it in the last fiscal year? I just want to make sure it's coming in annually.
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Yeah, one other thing, Eric, there's, with some of the benefits with all the different programs with the government, some of that has been allowances in the tax law for COVID or PPE supplies. Has village said anything along those lines that, that some of the expenses that you guys have had in opening up the library might be reimbursable through, through other grants or through other programs?
There are a number of grants that are definitely popping up. There's a couple that I saw advertised from the state that I think we're going to take a good, long look at taking advantage of potentially. In addition to the software, basically, anything related to reopening expenses, you can apply for under the CARES Act. So we also included in that our expenses related to PPE. So things like Lysol wipes on the small end, but also the barriers that we, that we purchased for all of our service points, those were included as well. So it ended up being over ten thousand dollars worth of expenses all told that we submitted. So.
Okay.
And unfortunately, with, with some of the payroll, it's the, my mind is going to blank on the exact what all the P stand for in the PPP. The payroll protection.
Payroll protection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That unfortunately, right now, does not apply to well, aspects of it, as far as the requirements do apply to government entities, government employers. But the, the opportunity to apply for the protection portion of it does not.
Yeah, I don't think we're, yeah, I don't think we're eligible, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there is an act actually sponsored by Brad Schneider that is on the table in Congress to extend that in a limited fashion to government entities. But it hasn't gone anywhere to this point. So fingers crossed, maybe it will at some point. The, I, I think it's a reasonable consideration that you know, with it as start disruption to tax revenues and things like that, that it's you know, very challenging time for, for government to keep services going and government services important. You know, some of it very critical, in fact, during the pandemic.
Yep.
John, everything okay? You look like.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, look, maybe, like, maybe we lost your, lost audio or?
Oh, no, I'm here.
Okay. Any, any other questions on that before I jump to my last and final point? For my financials. Okay, last thing that I wanted to draw attention to is at the bottom of the third page, which I highlight here, which is our differential between oh, it's not going to highlight for me nicely. I'll just take that one line. The difference here between our revenue and expenses. So that's looking at the year-to-date total balance here for this column for twenty-twenty. So third column in four sixty-five is the revenues received thus far and two hundred and sixty-two dollars in expenses, two hundred and sixty-two thousand in expenses. So we are continuing to try and be as careful as we can. All things considered with our expenditures, keeping in mind that there are still a lot of unknowns ahead through the fiscal year and that it behooves us to be careful and position ourselves carefully towards having the best possible year we can here in positioning ourselves well to deal with whatever happens to come up next in twenty-twenty. So to that end, we are running thirty-two thousand under in terms of expenses where we were at this point last fiscal year. So that's all according to plan to this point and fingers crossed we'll manage to get to a point later in the fiscal year where we'll be able to look back and say things turned out pretty darn good and we didn't need that extra cushion. I would love to see that happen, but right now, I think it's important for us to have that and continue to work with that.
Sorry, this is probably repetitive, but what's the, what's the major difference for the delta in the revenue?
Major reason for the difference?
Yes.
Um. So some of it is capital expenses. We got started a little bit slower at the start of the year in some of our purchasing for materials. So that's materials, books and DVDs. Some, some of those materials just haven't come out as at, as quickly as they would have in a typical year. Otherwise, generally, as chaotic as everything has been, there are you know, folks putting out movies and things that are looking to hold off on that. We got started a little bit at the very start of the year, we were still building up to getting our, back to full staffing, so there was a bit of savings there. We bring in some extra staffing usually to help with a big influx of people coming into the building. So we didn't actually need to spend any money for additional staffing that we would have spent there because we didn't have people coming into the building for summer reading club that we needed to work through those long lines.
I was referring to the revenues, not the expenses.
Oh, the revenues, sorry. The, the biggest variable on the the revenues, the two items I would draw attention to there scrolling up to those is that the property tax arrival continues to be drawn out. This makes it look a little bit worse than it actually is at this point because we were still into a lot of folks paying early last year because of the change to the tax code. So it's, so it's a bit of a, a bit of a matter that everything was really front-loaded last year and now it's much more drawn out. And then we also have, you know, you know, we're not doing passports. We're not doing a number of the other things that wouldn't, we would normally be getting revenue from, so. Okay. It's kind of a combination of those two.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that?
Are you getting any requests for passport services?
We are. And we're taking that into consideration as far as when we jump back in on offering those. Just the nature of a passport appointment makes it one of the more challenging things to offer during a pandemic. We had anticipated that we were, we were going to start getting the requests this early just because we know that the passport office continues to be hugely backed up. They're actually still processing applications from back in April. And generally speaking, there isn't really anywhere to go with your passport. You know, it's a nice piece of ID, but just about anywhere and everywhere you can't really travel to.
I think, I think one of the big, or at least one of the big things that I've gotten from talking to patrons about passports and considering I'm only there one day a week, I think I've fielded maybe four or five passport questions just in the time that I've been there. A lot of people, I think, are under the impression of either that there is a penalty if their passport is not renewed after it expires or they just see, oh, ID has expired, I must renew. Because we tell, we keep telling people that it's like, look, even if we did have a way to safely do passport appointments right now, there's so much of a backlog that your, your essential documents that you mail in are going to be, you know, they're going to be held up for, you know, potentially months at a time. And, you know, they're like, but it's expired. And I'm like, there's no penalty to that. I'm like, unless your passport is your only form of ID, in which case I would say get down to the DMV and get yourself a state ID in the meantime. But I think that's a big, that's like, no one has mentioned like travel or anything like that, I think, is just realizing that it's, that the expiration dates are coming up soon, but I tell them, I'm like, you know, no penalty to it. And occasionally, if I feel like the conversation's going in the right direction, I'd say, not a whole lot of places you can go anyway, which they've seemed to kind of, they're like, yeah, you're right. But I think that's what's driving a lot of the requests.
It's possible, too, that this time of year was when they had expected to start the process for a real ID. So people might be thinking about that and domestic traveling and if they need that or not. And instead of looking that up, they're just calling us, which is possible.
Is that been put on hold, you know?
Yep.
Yeah.
My advice is if you can avoid going to the DMD for anything, avoid it. I just went through renewing my license and it's a horrendous mess.
Yeah, I've heard the lines are really long, even early morning with just people.
Yes, I went early morning and there, there were four lines. One line was three people deep and it wrapped around the building. And, and then the, there was a shorter line, which was for senior citizens and boy, for once in my life, I was really glad to be a senior citizen. But it still, it still took hours to get through the process.
Yeah, and I will say, if you are like me and forget that you need to renew your license plate and have missed the opportunity to do so online, a currency exchange or similar organization made it so much faster to get that renewed. There's a, there's a small surf, there's a small like seven-dollar surcharge, but I, it was like a five-minute wait to get my, to wait for someone else to finish. And then, and that was like on the last day of the month, so.
There's, there's a small surcharge when you do it online, too, but it's, I think, less than three dollars. I think it's two point five or two fifty, something like that.
Yes, very small, but yeah, highly, highly recommend if, if you forget to take care of that. Currency exchange was a good.
Yeah, the emissions places also will do it for you as well.
Yep.
And they're pretty quick.
And I would also highlight that once things get back to normal here, that some renewal services are going to be offered through the library as well.
Something in addition to passports?
Yep.
Yeah.
That was on, that was on our to-do list and we were working on making that happen in March. And then although the world went into the handbasket, so to speak, so.
And then twenty-twenty.
Yep. That, that, yeah, yeah. That about sums it up. But next summer, by next summer, if things go, things go well here, you could be renewing licenses at the library, fingers crossed.
This would be a really nice.
A driver's license?
Plates, but they do offer the opportunity to expand into other things like license, too.
Really?
Really.
I didn't know that.
We just wanted to start simple. Give us, give us the easy stuff from the get-go.
Well, are you going to conduct road tests to renew licenses?
Well, no.
Good luck with that, Eric. Good luck with that.
The, see, Martha doesn't know yet, but this is going to be an expansion of her job responsibilities.
Don't give her that kind of power.
We're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have Martha out there with, with the new drivers doing the tests.
Martha, up your life insurance. Really, up your life insurance.
Well, our full-time staff actually does receive a life insurance coverage through the library, so. We're covered.
I don't know if this is covered under other duties as assigned.
Yeah, right.
No, I mean, the, like with the, the license renewal, any of the renewal activities that we would be handling would be like the most straightforward ones where it was, you still needed to stop by and make the payment and fill out maybe some basic paperwork, but you know, things like a road test weren't needed since obviously we're not truly going to be set up for those. I hope I'm not crushing your expectations, hopes and dreams here, Martha.
You're crushing mine.
I mean, based on how this year has gone so far, I feel like adding road tests to our array of services would be asking for trouble that just.
It'd go fine. Why wouldn't it go fine? It could go wrong.
It could go wrong.
Yeah.
Okay. Any final questions on the financial reports? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I motion to approve as discussed.
I second.
Okay, motion from Meyerhoff, second from Stroh, since it's financials, we'll do a roll call vote. So trustee Heinzelmann.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Excellent, and then we will back over to the packet here. And takes us up to the checks. Okay. Real quick, a couple checks of note. There is another one on the first page here made out to made out to the director. It's for more Lysol wipes. That should be, that should be the last room. Should be the last reimbursement for me in the, in this batch, since we've now, we're now into the village pipeline.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Glenn's, Glenn's hooking us up, which is appreciated. Okay, and then on page two, we have we have a charge to, from invoice from Dorma Kaba. I'm not sure where the Kaba comes from. The firm is Dorma and they work on doors. We were having some issues over the past month with our automatic door opener and they were good enough to come out and fix that. So that is the nature of that charge there. And the third one that I was going to draw attention to is a regular annual charge that we pay, which is this IHLS OCLC charge. OCLC is the what do they have that standing for now?
Ohio Library, oh, no, Ohio.
No, they changed it.
Something.
It, 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 it used to be the Ohio College Library Catalog. But now it's something really banal, like online collection, library catalog or something like that. But basically.
Catalog.
Yeah. Basically what OCLC is, is it is the, the one stop shop for bibliographic records. So whenever we need a bibliographic record to represent something in our catalog, we go to OCLC and download the record there and that we edit it for local usage in our catalog. So that is what that expense is, and we pay a small fee to them to access that database once a year. We get a huge discount on it through the state, hence the IHLS portion of that bill. Any questions on any of the other checks?
No.
If there are no other questions, then I would look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, Heinzelman moved. Do I have a second?
Checks or something like that?
Oh, yes. Let's see, the
11471. 11498.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Is it 11468?
It's 14468.
114468.
Then 121214498.
Yeah, that's right. Is there a second?
I have a second, no.
Who was the second? Oh, okay.
Okay. And again, money. So we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. And okay, that will take us up to committee reports. There weren't any committees that met. Is there anyone that would like to add anything that would be committee related?
Just, okay, glancing at committees that Scott is no longer a member of, and if that leaves his I don't think that leaves any just committee of one. So I guess it's, we can church, that's our outreach and community would just be Janie. I know that meets very infrequently at this point, so.
Yeah, that would probably be one we could just wait and drop in one or both of the new trustees when they join the board.
Good. And then, okay, all right.
Any other questions, comments, committees? Okay, then that will take us down to new business. The first item of which, since we had done the vote of thanks for Scott, is a resolution of thanks for Marlene Scheible. Marlene left the staff at Village of Lake Bluff, where she had been the assistant finance director since 2008. So she's done a lot for the library. She's been our primary contact with the village finance team for the last six or seven years. So someone that Laurent and I have both worked very closely with. So resolution reads, whereas Marlene Scheible has served as the Village of Lake Bluff finance, assistant finance director since 2008. Whereas Ms. Scheible left for the position of finance director of Villa Park on July 24th, 2020. And whereas Ms. Scheible has been essential in seeing that the Lake Bluff Public Library's finances are well kept and that the questions and concerns of five different library directors and many different library boards were answered and delayed. And whereas Ms. Scheible has contributed in action and advice as assistant finance director and beyond to the well being and growth of the community of Lake Bluff and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Library Trustees as follows that the Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and thanks Marlene Scheible for her 12 years of service to the Village of Lake Bluff. And that the director be directed to provide Ms. Scheible with a signed copy of this resolution and a certificate of thanks. Marlene has been very good egg and generally wonderful to work with. Almost unreasonably calm and easygoing about just about everything.
Did you guys end up doing something for her? I know we talked about that last month.
We are working on doing something for her. I'm trying to find out what the, the most appropriate thing to do would be. She ended up with just two weeks notice and we didn't get a heads up at the front of the two weeks. So she was gone pretty quick.
Yeah, I kind of got that.
And
That idea.
Then the the festivities, as far as going away, ended up being very, as you would imagine, stilted during the pandemic. So it was kind of a very small number of folks that kind of cycled through to pay their respects and the rest of us did, you know, a digital farewell. So it's all been very drawn out by circumstances.
Yeah.
To sum it up.
Yeah. You need a motion?
I do need a motion.
So move.
Motion from Heinzelman, second from Stroh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that will take us then to our next item of new business, which is our intergovernmental agreement. The renewal of our intergovernmental agreement with District 65. I've had a chance to meet a few times now with the new superintendent, Lisa Lielli, who I think at least thus far on first impression, first, second and third impression at this point looks to be a good hire for the school district. She's definitely very enthusiastic about collaboration with the library. And is very much in support of continuing with this agreement. So it will be going before the school board at their September meeting as an agreement between District 65 and Lake Bluff Library. It needs to be approved by both boards. So for the agreement on the table this evening, I would look for an approval from the library board pending approval from the school board. So that it will go into effect once both have approved.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
You have a question, John?
Is there a variation between this one and the, what's, what's an existence this year?
No, it's a renewal of the existing agreement.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Cal.
Okay, so so I move that we adopt this.
A second?
Motion from Stroh and second from Meyerhoff. Since it's an intergovernmental agreement, which does include an element of payment from the District 65 to the library, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
And as we segue then to our agreement here with District 115, I would also mention that I have not received thus far in 2020, any Freedom of Information Act requests related to this. So.
Well, that's a good sign.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I, I did mention to our new superintendent that there had been some had been uninterested party. Just in case that interest was renewed, but I think the, that party's watchdog enthusiasms are currently elsewhere at the moment, is my understanding. So moving on, then the final item on the new business is the agreement with District 115. So this looks like it should be able to go forward without any any hiccups. As with both of the agreements, with the one with District 65 and the one with District 115, we're trying to do more than we have in the past collaboratively with all the schools in the area to try and support the schools through what's a pretty challenging time to be an educational institution. So any questions about the agreement with District 115? Otherwise I would look for a motion to renew this. It is a renewal, so the agreement is it isn't substantially different other than the dates from previous years.
Eric, just real quick, and it's a minor detail, but the difference between the the two agreements, one has in the term of the IGA has a start and an end date on this one and the, and the one we just approved doesn't have the end date, even though it's mentioned later on in the, in the agreement. I didn't know if we're, if we're looking at keep them consistent between the two organizations.
The, you referring to the first paragraph here?
Yeah, the one, this one is September 1st, ends October 30th, 2021. The one we just approved just starts on the 30th day of September and doesn't have an end date in the first paragraph. Even though, as you go deeper into the document, it does have the term in there.
Yeah. Yeah, the first paragraph's a little bit different. Hadn't grabbed me before, probably because it's focused mostly on the consistency of the paragraphs. I don't think we need to change it at this point to make it consistent between the, the two, since the function is to get to the same place.
Okay, no problem.
In terms of what goes into into effect. But taking a look at next year, just because I enjoy symmetry in the world, I probably will make that paragraph the same next year. Cause it'll bug me now that I've.
Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you for pointing it out.
Right. We've only got 12 months to live with it.
I'll manage somehow.
Well, there's enough other things that are gonna bug you. So, you know.
Yeah, I have three sons, Cal.
Yeah, right. I was thinking of.
You know, you might just want to think about rewriting the 65 one to match the 115, because I think 115 is gonna have mega problems for which this little, little glitch is gonna be way down on their list of priorities.
They're, and I'll get to that a bit in the director's report. They're off to an interesting start to their school year, to be sure.
Well.
Okay.
By today, there were a whole bunch of them sitting on the front lawn practicing social distancing and there seemed to be either teachers or coaches with them.
Yeah, they are planning to make good use of the, that big lawn.
Well.
That's a good thing.
Good luck when it rains.
Yeah. No, short version, as far as District 115 is that, I think I had mentioned at the last meeting that the proposal from their board, from their administration to the District 115 board was that they do district learning, distance learning for the school year because they didn't feel that it was going to be feasible to do in person and the District 115.
Distance learning for, for the first semester and then to reevaluate something like that.
Yeah. That sounds right. But the board rejected that unanimously. So they've, the administration, there's been a bit of a scramble to figure out exactly what they're going to do at this point. So I think what they've landed on is, is that they're doing the first month distance learning and then they're going to start phasing in the kids coming back to school in cohorts. I kind of have a suspicion that they're that it's a little bit of a hail Mary that things will either get really good as far as not being much coronavirus, or they'll get really bad. And it'll be really clear that they have to go one way or another.
And which one I'm gonna put my money on.
Not.
I can tell you which one I'll put my money on, unfortunately, not that I want to see it happen, but.
Well, it's 2020, so things going really bad is probably a safe, a safe bet.
Yeah, I'm with you, Janie. I think you know, I just think it's inevitable that things are gonna get worse.
Yep.
I'll jump into the.
It's not the venue discussing that, but it's gonna be interesting.
We'll jump ahead here and I'll give you some more information as far as relevant details here when we get to the director's report. But to deal with this particular item of business, if nobody has any other questions, then I would look for a motion.
I saw move.
I second.
Okay, motion from Meyerhoff, second from Stroh. And trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Yes, aye, aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
And trustee Stroh.
Aye.
So Eric, quick question. These documents that Janie and I have to sign, will they be at the can we pick them up tomorrow and go in and sign them? You're, you're open from two to six tomorrow?
Yep, and I'll be into the tomorrow's one of my office days. So I'll be imprinting stuff off.
Okay.
And I will.
Kathy, are, are you gonna be able to get in and do that? Or do you want me to go pick them up and bring them over to you?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Janie. I was actually in the other day. I had a long visit with a license and picked up a book, so.
Good. Getting around.
I'm getting around.
Okay. Okay, and then we'll jump over to.
Oh, did you, did you want to put recruit new board members?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And this is really just a quick update here before we jump into old business. We've got two openings now, obviously. So talked with Kathy. We really need to take a look at you know, starting the recruitment process for those two openings could get to be a challenge really is in terms of continuing to meet quorums in the future as well as at this point. I think it's fair, fair to say that you know, when will we be able to get back to doing more traditional interviews, not on Zoom, which would be what we'll likely have to do as part of the process here? It's hard to say. So at this point, we'll move forward with the the process, and I'm just starting as far as getting the information together. So what I will be taking a look at doing is sending out an email, basically just the general posting that we've put out in the past with a request from the five of you that are trustees still on the board, as far as what what your thoughts are as far as what we might include as far as who we would be looking for, you know, who would be somebody that would might be you know, a particular sort of person that we would look to have on the board in in terms of representing the community and in terms of skill set that might be useful to the board.
Don't we have an election coming up in the spring of 2021?
We do, so somebody that would be interested in also running when that election occurs would be a helpful question that we'll probably want to ask as well.
So are these two positions that we're filling Kate Jackson and Scott Butler? So is it filling those two whenever those term are up, or is it a grand election cycle, or?
Yeah, so what we'll be looking to do is to fill out the remainder of their tenure for those two positions. And then ideally, particularly because those were two positions that were going to be up anyways for election on the cycle next spring, we'll be trying to find some folks that will not only fill out the what is it, seven, seven months left, but will also be interested in running so that they'll join, and then we'll have consistency rather than somebody that's around for half a year, and then we have to break somebody else on.
Yeah, and so that vote committee group caucus, whatever it will be called at the time that they that that's in December, I think.
Yep, that's coming up.
So that'll be looking for candidates then.
Yeah, which is why part of the process that I'm looking at here, we we always loop in the Vote LB group as as far as letting them know when we're looking for anybody, because sometimes they've got folks that have expressed interest between elections. But I think we'll probably lean on them extra, given the circumstances, since they would be beating the bushes for candidates anyway.
Yeah, and somewhere in the most recent discussion, I recall someone talking about letting the friends know that we will be looking for candidates as well.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we had some discussion too, that we've got we've got a few members of the the friends. I mean, we don't want to kneecap our wonderful friends of the library, but they've got some new members that would probably make really good trustees as well, so.
We have I mean, we have candidates from the last search that maybe might be possible, right?
We do. We had, unfortunately, one of our finalists from the last round has since died. So Sayed passed away last month, sadly.
Oh, okay, he's a neighbor of mine, yeah.
Yeah. But Meg Gustafson, as far as I know, might well still be interested, so that could be. I remember her being a very strong candidate, so that would be a discussion point as well. Janie?
I just wondered, John, since since you were his neighbor, do you know anything about whether, because I couldn't even find an obituary or anything.
No, no.
Nothing?
Nothing, I don't know.
Wow.
We haven't been able to find anything anything either, and really, our confirmation really at this point is just that we had one of his kids, you know, eventually stopped by the library, and so we were able to talk to talk to them and get the confirmation. I think it was Jeff, but I wasn't the one that talked to him, so I don't can't say for certain.
You know, the other thing is, since the children's section is such a major portion of the library, it'd be nice to have one or two members that actually have school age children, children, you know.
What was Eric, what was the name of the other person who we interviewed?
Meg Gustafson.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and my recollection of the was that the board had a very positive opinion of her, so I will as part of the process, reach out and see if she would still be interested. Then would be somebody we could have her in as a ringer at the start, somebody we know we're pretty comfortable with. So to sum up, look for more information as far as the process and the posting to be headed out to trustees seeking input and comment.
Yeah, and I would just comment here. For the time I've been on the board, often trustees have potential trustees have been recommended by board members or through church groups and so on and so forth, so certainly if you have residents in mind that you think might serve or might be interested or are looking for something, you know, make a recommendation, let Eric know, and certainly share their names, because we're looking, the more I think we've all seen vacancies occur and things change, so having filling a vacancy doesn't mean that six months later or a year later, we're not in the same situation, so it's good to have a pool of people who are interested.
Yeah.
How many of us, our terms are up, my term is up next May, how many of the rest of us are have our terms up?
Who?
Mine?
Okay.
21?
Yeah.
May of 21, yeah. I think so.
Well, Janie, I think you and I might be on the same cycle, which is 20. Oh, wait, because I don't know, you know, Eric, I'm gonna lean back on you, because you tend to know these things, but why didn't you let us know by the next meeting?
I think you are, because you were at the caucus thing together, right?
Yeah.
That's right. Kathy, you and I were at the caucus thing together, and I couldn't remember how long ago that was.
And I was at that same caucus thing.
So I think.
That two years ago or four years ago?
It wasn't four years ago, because there's an election in in the spring, so I think we're in the next cycle, which I guess is 23.
Okay, all right.
Because it seems to me that I have like two more years after next spring.
Okay, then I probably do too.
Yeah.
So I'll be I'll be up for for election, having taken over someone else's slot when I when I joined.
Eric?
No, Eric?
I'm thinking.
Oh, okay.
So who, Bill, you replaced Tim?
I'm not sure. John and I came on around the same time. I wasn't sure who I replaced on the.
I think John might have replaced Carl.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Maybe we could get Carl to come back on the board.
That would be good.
Yeah, pretty unlikely, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty unlikely.
Unfortunately, get access to to that document. Add some light to my room here. Sorry, lighting in my living room apparently is very weird for this meeting. But I to get access to that document, I have to get onto the VPN and remotely access, so I will find that, and then I will send it out later. But I know that Scott and Kate were definitely two that had their terms up in the spring. They had both at various times asked about their their tenure, so that was research I'd already done. So.
Here, I can tell. Because I've got the document.
Cass got hard copy.
You're up 423, Kathy.
That's what I thought, yeah.
421, Scott Butler's 421, so whoever's blue-pleasing Scott, that we 421. Janie, you're 423. John Heinzelmann is 423. William Hayes is 421.
Okay.
And Kate Jackson was 421. And Eric Bailey, they don't list anything for you.
That's good. I wouldn't I wouldn't want to know my date. For as a director, that would be a little ominous if they were assigning something there. Okay, thank you for grabbing that, Cal.
You're welcome.
So that would have been, that's Kate and Scott's openings, and then Bill as as well. I hope you'll consider hope Bill will consider rejoining us for another four years.
Yeah.
Let's see. I'll find out the election process.
It's pretty simple, actually.
Yeah.
You have to have a campaign song that you perform.
Signs.
You have to have a virtual, you know, some kind of convention with famous people speaking for you.
Yeah.
That is a good point, because the caucus usually gets like several hundred people together in a pretty small room for their process and the signature, so it'll be interesting to see how they handle that.
Well, we should all be experts at that by now, right? Or by that time at least.
Yeah. Okay. Ooh.
That's Kelsey.
That's a comment from the public.
Okay, then I think we'll move on to our last item of business for the the meeting. Unless we have any additional questions. Okay. So our last item of business then is the, whoops. Getting my.
Two more, right there, under old business.
Well. Yes and no. There's not really much to discuss under one item of the of the new business of the old business, since fundraising continues to be oh, challenging.
The prospectus and folders are at the library, though.
We do want to mention that. The the prospectus and folders have arrived.
Oh, nice.
So if you have an interest in taking a look at those, swing on by and take a gander. But.
It's been so long since we had any transactions, so forgive me, but so the do I want to check to the library? Why don't you let me know how to do that? Because that that I think that you think the library was is going to be billed for that and then reimbursed by the foundation.
That's my understanding. I will let you know the amount.
Okay. And I think the check was in your office somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I had it's locked into one of the file cabinets at this point, since traffic was a bit slower in the library, so I wanted to be sure that it was
That's fine.
Talked away. Okay, well, we'll touch base and we'll get that worked out, get that coordinated. That's really the only, in terms of that item of old business, item to report, a lot of things with fundraising right now just nationally in general, tend to be very much on hold. There's just a lot of uncertainty. And I thank John for keeping us looped in a bit as far as the larger fundraising world and the wider perspective on on that as far as, you know, what's being thought and felt out in that professional sphere.
Yeah, there's a lot of organizations that are hurting right now, because fundraising is just down.
Yeah, fundraising is down, but but the clamor for your donations is way up. Everybody's.
Yeah, there's a lot of need.
Yeah, and it's incessant, and it comes by, you know, it comes by phone and by email and by US Postal Mail when they deliver, and it's just endless.
I think the, I mean, I think the organizations like the food depository have done well, where there's a perceived, there's a real perceived need to help people that are in need. I think those those organizations are doing well fundraising wise. Others, you know, not so much, you know.
I just spent three days at Catholic Charities volunteering their backpack and school supplies program, and they did very well. Certain corporations like Restoldium Corporation just gave, I think it was 164 filled backpacks, backpacks filled with all the supplies. So they did well on that, but I know that there's also and the food bank, the North Northern Illinois Food Bank is not the only food bank clamoring for donations. Meals on Wheels is and other various smaller pantries that, you know, give out food, they're all asking for donations.
And by the way, don't forget that the the what is that church that has the office right in town? They have a truck sitting there, you know.
Yes, yes.
Community church.
The community church?
Yeah, Tom Dinkelman.
Right, right, you know, there's a truck there, and people are just putting groceries in the truck all the time, so.
Yeah.
That's.
And then there's the diaper drives, lots of diaper drives. And also, there seems to be a lot of drives for the essential workers, for the heroes, as they put it. So I think I think people are are being sort of stalked, maybe, by these different organizations, so I can understand why fundraising is a bit of a hassle right now.
Yeah. Well, you can't, I mean, you know, yeah, it's just, it's difficult, it's and there's a national trend right now for fewer donors making larger gifts. Like your your traditional annual funds of organizations that rely on the operating, you know, the lots of small donations to make up for the operating costs of the organization. Nationwide, those smaller donations, I don't know where they're going, but they're, I know with universities and colleges, there's there's a steady decline, it's just just the number of donors, which means that you've got to, if you want to stay even, you've got to make up the difference by getting more money from fewer donors. So and is that query, is that sustainable long term? I don't know, you know.
Maybe some of those donations that you say you don't know where they're going, maybe they're not going anywhere. Because a lot of people are out of work, or they're facing the possibility of being out of work, and so maybe people are being more cautious.
Well, I think many of them have to be.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so.
Or also, there's political campaigns which are raising millions of dollars a day, so money's going in different directions.
The unusual times.
Yeah.
We have a nice forecast. And the prospectus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, John, isn't that a Chinese curse? Isn't that what that is?
The prospectus, I mean, ours, it's pretty timeless from, as I recall, and the way it's prepared.
I think it is.
It's not to get locked into, oh, you guys did this, you know, two years ago or something, so.
Right, no.
It'll be available.
So that's the very upbeat update on on the fundraising. The other item of old business that we have is the the value statement. There were some requested additions at the last meeting. Specifically, let me see, look at my notes here. There was a request to add some information about the importance of courtesy, particularly courteous service and good stewardship. And these appear under items here for customer service. And accountability.
Where you get transparency in there. Yeah, transparent communication.
Yep.
Financial and activities. Well, I hate to, I'm gonna make a comment. I wasn't in attendance last month and we didn't meet in June, so I apologize. Eric, you and I had talked about this one time. When I sat down and read it for tonight, under the, the recommendation, it says the Lake Bluff Public Library line to what we do to meet the educational and entertainment needs of the community. And I, I'll defer to everybody else here, but I, I think that, that just strikes me as is not really hitting the target of a library. Educationally, yes, or literacy, but entertainment or education and entertainment, there seems to be something missing there.
Recreational might be a better word.
Even more. Almost think back to the Chautauqua days and put in something like edification or Yeah, yeah. Something like that because, yeah, we want people to have a good time, but our, it seems like everything we do is kind of geared towards educating people in some way. Certainly make it go down with a spoonful of sugar and all of that, but.
Was this from our mission statement? Because we might just, maybe it would be.
No, I don't think so.
What about the word enrichment?
That's a good one. Yeah. That's a good one.
I like that one.
Then I think that, that covers, that covers the entertainment aspect, but gives it a little more
Absolutely.
substance.
A little more gravitas maybe?
Yeah.
Yes.
And rather than even educational, maybe literacy needs. Because not, like, I'm not reading books to educate myself anymore. I'm, I'm, I don't know, maybe, and maybe I'm just nitpicking here. But educational and entertainment just strikes me as Channel 11 kind of stuff versus a library. But I do like enrichment very much.
If you took out edu, entertainment and substitute enrichment, would that do it?
You know, I do read books to educate myself.
What, what do you think?
I read that one about opioids, what was happening with the country with opioids.
Well.
That was a reading between the remains book. I don't object to educational, but I think enrichment is really good.
Okay, right. Good.
So if we replace entertainment with enrichment.
That works.
Good.
Yep.
Are you on page 11A here that's showing on the screen? Because I'm trying to.
I am on 11A.
Yes.
Okay, what, what bullet point are we on?
We are on.
Oh, that one. Oh, okay. That's why I couldn't find it. That's the one I skipped reading. Okay. Education.
Janie.
Yeah, I, I think enrichment is, is a very good word. Yes, I agree. Scott.
Okay. Barring other comment or question, I would look for a motion to approve as amended.
I move that we approve this as amended.
My second.
Motion from Stroh, second from Meyerhoff. Doesn't involve money, so let's do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? One dog opposed. So motion carries. All right, and that takes us up then to Director's Report. And a couple of quick items to add on the, the Director's Report. One that I would add is that I learned earlier today that we have new neighbors. The Weilers, I guess, in June or July had moved back to France.
Really?
Yeah, they sold their house and moved.
So they're putting a new roof on the house, right?
What did you say?
Yeah.
They're putting a new roof on that. If, if that's the house he's talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Real estate must be really hot right now because houses are selling without even signs going up, or maybe there is a sign there, but.
Yes. That everything I have heard from, from the village is, is that real estate on the North Shore in general is very hot right now. Things are not, are not setting.
Quite some times, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of concern and uncertainty about a lot of different things in the world right now and communities like Lake Bluff and Lake Forest are viewed as very safe, comfortable places to be.
Yeah, a lot of people moving up from the city.
Yeah, people want to get out of Chicago and I don't blame them.
Yeah. My daughter's looking to move up, up here and the bridges are either up, there's, there's the potential of a riot, it's just not a comfortable place, so.
No, it sure isn't.
Definitely.
And the potential for getting shot in your car too.
Well, I'll say two of my three kids have purchased homes in the last couple of months, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's an update on that. I don't know who's acquired that and I don't know if the Weiler's still on the PNC building, but I will hopefully find out.
Yep.
Other item that I was going to add as far as the report. The school situation continues to be very fluid. Last I heard from District 65 was that the instructions that they'd received from the county were that any time that they had a young person or a member of the staff that showed symptoms that could be related to COVID-19, that guidance was to treat it as though it was a positive case. So in addition with some challenges I know that they've had as far as working with the, the teachers union out there, that could be a real challenge if they have to put that in place. Just because COVID-19 symptoms include sore throat and sniffles and you know. Yeah. A lot of things that a lot of kids are can just generally be prone to for any number of reasons in the fall, so. I mentioned that chiefly as just that it is a situation that remains really fluid. They're trying their best, trying to work very hard and we're trying to find every opportunity we can to be supportive. But as many challenges as we've got for the getting the library open again, I will definitely take our challenges over what the school districts have to work with. So they're facing a lot right now. So, oh, only other item that I would add is that we did hire, hire a new shulver. Our current shulver Zach Dove, Zachary Dove is off to college. Fingers crossed. I hope that goes well for him. And Kenna McBane is joining our staff as a new shulver.
You spell that?
M, capital M, small c, capital B. E, A, N. And it is, and the, the family, Kenna, K-E-N-N-A. And the, the, the family is always very clear whenever I've talked with them that it is McBane and not McBean. And Ken has been a volunteer on a, for a few years now in the youth services department and has proven to be very reliable. Went through the interview process with her and she's going to be a good addition to the staff. She's already particularly impressed me with a lot of volunteering that she's doing. Cal, you'd mentioned the Catholic Charities Backpack Program and she had mentioned that she'd actually taken the initiative of setting up something along similar lines with the through, I believe, the Methodist Church in Lake Bluff. So was in, in, impressed with someone with not a substantial number of years at the number of volunteer initiatives that she's actually led. So she'll be good. She is good. Glad to have her on board. And on that note, I would wrap up the Director's Report and then open the floor to any questions of a general nature.
Yeah, two questions, Eric. One, just how, how in general the startup of the library opening up, how's, how's it received? How the staff feeling about things now versus when it was started up? In, in general?
I think staff continue to have concerns, I would say, overall that we've gotten ourselves into a good groove. I think it's been very positive being open in the sense that we haven't encountered. You know, anytime that you're planning to roll out a, a new service, you, you have to kind of game plan for the worst possible scenarios as far as people that are going to throw the, you know, wrench into the works. And we haven't had any of those worst case scenarios and I think that's been very positive and kind of helped people settle into a good rhythm as far as being open again. Which isn't the same as saying that you know, people's guards aren't still up. They very much are. It's hard, I think, for that not to be the case, just with a lot of the news as far as the pandemic that we continue to see. As, as far as the patron experience coming in. You know, I would say overall patrons tend to be very cautious coming in and going about their business. Most patrons are very careful. We do still have a lot of patrons that are making a lot of use of the curbside service. That continues to be really popular. We did see a bit less interest when we opened again, but there's definitely a lot of interest in that, which speaks to that. There's a lot of people that are still looking at the situation and thinking if I don't have to go into the library, then, you know, I'll, I'll just pick the stuff up. And, yeah, it's interesting times.
Yeah.
Very, overall, the, the word that I would describe on staff and public side as careful as a sentiment from everybody involved. Which is good. We've had a couple of people that have been kind of like not angry or obnoxious about not wearing face masks or things like that, but a bit kind of excessively casual about it, like, I'm going to wear it, but I am going to show through my mannerisms that I, what I think of the need for it. But that's been the worst that we've had.
Hope it stays that way.
I've done both. I've done the curbside pickup and I've done going into the library. And I just was impressed with how flawless everything was. The curbside pickup, when I happened to pick up my book, the first time, I, mine was the only one there. The second time, there were two packages. But I didn't have to stand six feet away from anybody because I was the only one picking up at the time. Going into the library was really kind of nice to, you know, to get back in the library and see the familiar surroundings. A few things have been changed, but this, it's the same helpful, cheerful staff. And at the time that I went, I think there were only two other patrons in the library. I don't know who was downstairs, but so that, you know, there, there was no crowding or anything like, it was just wonderful to get back in the library. And I think the staff is doing a really good job. At both welcoming people and also the, the curbside stuff.
I agree, Cal.
Thank you, Cal. Really.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're, you're, you've got a good system set up. I mean, it's easy to reserve books. It's easier, it's easy to you get a feedback right away. How do you want to pick it up? Can you, you're, we've got three days a week that we can go into the library. You've got curbside days. I actually, my first little venture out by myself after my surgery was to pick up curbside and I realized I couldn't walk up those darn stairs. So I stood there looking very perplexed and, and one of the staff came out and just brought me my bag down the stairs and off I went. So it's, so it's very much the Lake Bluff Public Library where everyone is just so wonderful and helpful, but it's, it's nice to have, it's nice to have the library functioning. It's just, it's like one more step towards normalcy. Whatever new normal is, this is part of, you know, our, our reality and it's, it's good to have it back.
And one thing that I was thrilled about was that you still have intra-library loan. And so I was able to request some books and I've had two replies. One, one, the book came through and the other one was that the book was unavailable at this time, which didn't surprise me because it's a book that's been out of print for well, about three quarters of a century. I'm still educating myself.
Okay. Bill, I think you had started us off. I think I lost track of your original question.
No, that was, no, that was, it was good and getting, getting feedback from other people. I mean, I, my visit there at the time, somebody had taken their mask off, a small child had taken their mask off and coughed over on the.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So they were, they were cleaning everything down and, and, and again, just very diligent with, with everything, so.
Yeah, we, we did also have another patron last week who was, he would, he was, I would put him at least in his 60s, definitely old enough to know better. And I, he had come in wearing the mask and he was at the print station very close to the desk and I heard him sneeze and I looked up and I saw that his mask was down under his chin. And so I went over there and I had to, I took him, I was like, sir, you've got to put your mask on. And he just kind of looked at me and put it like under his nose. I'm like, no, over your nose, no, over your nose. And he only stayed a few more minutes and then he left. As soon as he left, I was wiping that down. But thankfully, most people have been, have been good about wearing their masks consistently and properly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even if they make a point of letting us know that they may not agree with the need for masks, they still follow it. And then I, I think at this point, you know, the mask rules have been in place for so long that we're kind of taking advantage of that to some extent that you know, at this point, most anybody going out anywhere just kind of expects that they'd need to wear a mask. But we're, we're fortunate that we have a fantastic staff who do really well with you know, working out the details for complicated situations. I know that they've been at times under a lot of strain as, as far as some of the details that 2020 has thrown at us as far as needing to be worked out. But everybody's continued to hang together, work really hard. And always keeping an eye on you know, our twin goals of doing things safely for the community and providing the best possible service that we can. for the community and providing the best possible service that we can within that safety limit.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
That I could.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 8:53 PM.
Thank you, Eric.
And wonderful as always seeing all of you.
Thank you.
Continue to stay well.
How's Sam?
He is doing great. He's doing amazing. Let me see here if I can find a picture to share real quick.
His brothers haven't written in Sharpie on his head yet or anything like that?
No, they actually really they like him a lot.
Well, that doesn't mean. They don't like him.
That's true.
Wait till.
That was my experience.
Wait till he starts teething on their toys. Then they'll, then they'll put up a fuss.
That's true, that's true. Okay, apparently I don't have one on my desktop here handy. So I will have to send it out to you later if you're interested. Oh, wait, here's one. I can share this one real quick. So there he is.
Oh, my. Out in the grass.
Yeah, that was a, that was a onesie that his grandparents got for him. So that was the
So does that. You had to get that.
Well, his his grandpa George, after he moved up to central Wisconsin, became a big Brewers fan. Despite having spent 60 plus years in Chicago. So.
So much for loyalty, huh?
I guess, but you know, he did move up there before the Cubs managed to make runs at the playoffs. So that probably tied into that.
He's darling, absolutely darling.
He's wonderful.
And he's growing and healthy.
He's grown, he's healthy. He's a little bit extra cross-eyed versus some of the his, his brothers. But that seems to be fading. Babies are always a bit cross-eyed at the start. But he's a, he's a sweetheart. He's getting into, you know, a bit more engaged and doing some smiling and laughing. So that's always wonderful.
It is, it is. Makes it feel worth it, doesn't it?
Yes.
But sleeping is good too.
Yeah. I, he's, he's not sleeping through the night yet, so we'll taking it as that comes.
All righty, everybody. We all so well and.
Thank you. Okay.
Figure.
Bye now.